All right. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our Fort Mill's Town Council meeting here for November the 11th. It's wonderful to see all of you. If you would, if you have a phone, an iPad, a computer, any device that may ring, beep, chirp, or play us a song, please turn it on silent so that we can give you our full attention when it is time for you to speak. So, thank you for doing that. Sorry for the seating, but this room has a fire code that we will adhere to. And in the coming months, we're going to have a much larger chamber so that we can entertain as many people that could tolerate listening to us. So, thank you so much for joining us and being patient. We appreciate it. So, we're going to stand for our pledge of allegiance, and then Councilman Helms will offer an invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we come before you tonight. We would thank you for the many blessings of life. Thank you for being able to live in a country that we, that you've given us. We pray that you be with us tonight. Guide us, direct us, give us the wisdom to conduct tonight's business, and we'll give you the praise and glory for it all in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Before we begin our agenda this evening, I think it's appropriate to say thanks one more time for our staff at the town for putting on yet again another very beautiful Veterans Day memorial program this morning. If you missed it because you were at work, I understand, but it was stellar. Our speakers were great, the music was pretty, and it always does my heart good to see that those folks that come year after year have served our country well. So, I'd like to thank each veteran, and I'd like for you to do the same. So, thank you for tolerating that moment. Council members, you have received the minutes for October the 3rd special call meeting, October 14th council meeting, and October 28th council workshop. Are there any deletions, additions, omissions?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have a list of people signed? Thank you. Steve, is this...
Busman.
Busman? Do I know you? I think I know you. I do. I think you went to school again. We, yeah, and Sherri, with you? Right there in front of my face. How are you? It's very good to see you. I see that you both have signed in. You're not in town, but I am more than happy to give you a minute or so if you have something you would like for us to address. And for those of you, I'm not doing this because I know them, but they live right outside of Mason's Bend, which is adjacent to our town limits on both sides. So, did you have something you'd like to say? Steve?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about the new fire department that's going to be joining my mom's land. We knew it was probably coming and didn't realize it was just soon, and glad it is coming because, you know, without any fire protection.
Yes, sir.
But I just had a couple of questions, and if we're not going to get to stay, I'll ask them now. So, I think Eric was the one that...
Well, this is the right time for you to ask the questions, but let me go ahead and tell you, Steve, we know we're headed in that direction, but we have not received plans or anything that's definitive. The land was donated to us, as I'm sure you're aware. With many of our larger developments, we now require that they give something to the community. So, they gave us land, which is precious in this area, and that was the right place based on our research and study for response times from the fire department to add an additional station. So, if your questions are about design, entrance, or any of those things, we're not going to have any answers for you. It's not far enough into the process for that.
Well, we had just noticed where they had surveyed, and I just wanted to know maybe if that's the...
That's the first step to getting design started and for us to argue back and forth on what we want and what we like and what we need.
We have a chance to do that. Not that we're going to be arguing, but just to keep in the know.
I absolutely understand. I would think that would be sometime second quarter next year. Carrie?
I would think so. Certainly, if he'd like to send either Chris or I an email, we'd be happy to reach back out to him. We have some information.
I'll get in touch with the two of you and send you the contact. Carrie is our town manager. Chris is our assistant manager for the planning side of things. So, we will make sure that you have an opportunity to ask those questions. We just literally don't have any information to answer from at this point other than will there be a third fire station? Yes, there will. Will it be in Mason's Bend? Yes, it will.
Okay. So, I guess we're free to leave then.
No, you're staying all night, the whole meeting.
I'm sure that if you'd like to hang around, we'll be discussing some pretty interesting things, but it's up to you, my friends.
Mama says we're going.
Hey, mama. We understand. We understand. Well, thank you for coming, and by all means, I'll send you the contact information, or you can call anytime, and we'll do what we can to make sure you get what you need, okay? All righty. Thank you. Have a good evening. Hmm? No?
He just gave them a card.
Yeah.
He just gave them a card.
Thank you. Sherri, are you staying?
Um, no, I do have a question.
Okay.
Is the location even to be discussed? Is there other property in Mason's Bend where you can locate the fire department?
We do not own other properties in Mason's Bend. This particular property was given to us, and the location of it fit our need. So, I'm sure you've probably got some questions, seeing as how it's bordered by other properties, but I'll defer to Carrie and Chris to get with you on that, okay?
But it's not up for discussion?
Nope, not really.
Not at all?
If you're going to give us some property, then it's fair.
Got any to trade?
Okay, um, then I'll just try to...
Carrie will call you or Chris.
Yeah, he's got a card. That'd be the...
You're welcome.
And she's sweet. She would listen to you. Thank you, and I'm sorry. Good to see you.
See y'all.
All right. So, we've been through the public comment. We'll now move into presentations. Presentation number one, employee of the quarter. Our town manager, Carrie Vargo, will walk us through that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to present this evening Employee of the Quarter for the Fourth Quarter 2324 to Marin Long from our HR department. Marin was described to me in the committee as always earnest in her HR duties and steadfastly committed to not only those folks that she works with on a daily basis, but committed to all town employees across all departments. So, Marin, thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you for making Fort Mill a better place to work.
Thank you.
All right. For those of you in the audience, it's so important to note how happy everyone around her is. How often do your fellow employees vote you for something very special and then come after hours to attend? We appreciate you greatly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Happy's good, so let's continue. Presentation number two, Christmas events. Jacana Hester, is there snow on the horizon?
It's not a 68 degrees.
No, I wish. I wish. One can wish.
So, we will start off with our Fort Mill Christmas Village and Lighting of the Tree. That will be on Thursday, December the 5th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street. From 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., you will be able to enjoy food, drinks, and snacks from our food vendors. We'll have shopping with our Christmas Village vendors, raving entertainment, trackless trains, kids' activities, and visits with Santa. And then from 6:00 to 6:30 will be our tree lighting ceremony on the amphitheater stage. And then again on the amphitheater stage from 5:00 to 6:00 and 6:30 to 8:00, we will have the handbell choir, a jazz band, school choirs, and dance groups performing. Our tree lighting ceremony at 6:00 includes our emcee, Lucas McFadden. He's from WRHI. Fort Mill Town Council, our South Carolina Strawberry Festival queens, Berry Be Good, our mascot, Santa. We'll have special music, and then, of course, the big moment of lighting our 50-foot tree in the park along with all the park and downtown decorations. And this is a few pictures from last year with our dance groups and school groups and the trackless trains and our picture ops that we have out at the park. And at this event, we will only have Argy Street that will be closed from 2:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. from North White to just below the amphitheater entrance. We'll have all of our food vendors set up on the right-hand side of the park, and then on the left hand will be our Christmas Village vendors with our 50-foot tree, our kids' activities, and then our train rides near Argy Street. Our parking is available at Veterans Park, 106 North White Street, Calhoun Street Park, 203 Calhoun Street, Looms Way, and then we'll have Handicapped behind the amphitheater and at 205 North White. And we just ask everyone not to park along roadways around the park. We have several event rules. The main ones are no animals except for service animals, no outside food and beverages or coolers. If you bring a golf cart, please park it and designate a parking lot. And then all the other things you can view at our town website, fortmillsc.gov. And we just ask everyone to please bring a blanket or chair so you can sit and watch all the amphitheater entertainment we have going on, and follow Town of Fort Mill on social media and visit our website for all the information.
All right. Council members, any questions for Jacana?
Will be snow.
Yeah. My question. I just hope it's cool, you know?
I know.
Shorts at Christmas, I don't know.
You're right.
But we appreciate all the efforts. The events at the end of the year tend to roll right into each other, so I know it's an exhausting period of time, but we're all grateful and we're happy that those events occur in Fort Mill. So, thank you, Jacana and staff.
Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you.
And then we will, the following Saturday, December the 7th, we have the 77th Annual Fort Mill Christmas Parade. Beautiful picture going down Main Street last year. Our parade emcees are David Ward, who is a local historian, and Ashley Lang from WRHI. And then this year, we are very excited to announce that our grand marshal will be the Honorable Ray Felder, South Carolina House Representative. Ms. Felder has served as a member of the House for the 26th district since 2012, and she's retiring this month. And we have David W. Martin that will be our elect for this seat, so he'll be joining us at our tree lighting and events this year. Our grand marshal reception will be held to honor Mrs. Felder before the parade begins, and that will be at Town Hall. Then she will lead the 77th Annual Fort Mill Christmas Parade through Historic Downtown. So, we're very excited to have her. And this is just shows the parade route. It begins on Tom Hall in Unity at Unity, and then it travels through Main Street in Historic Downtown, and then up North White, and then exits at Walter Elijah. And then we have several street closures around this area to accommodate for all the staging, and that will be, of course, the primaries, Tom Hall, Main Street, North White. And then the secondary are Gray Street, Forest Street, Monroe White, Confederate, Spring Street, Claiborne, and Massey. And then all of that will be going on from around 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And this is a few photos from last year. And our judges, they will be stationed at the fire station on Tom Hall Street, and they will be picking the entries for most creative, best holiday theme, best car vehicle, best golf cart, most holiday spirit, and best walking group. And then this year, this is our last event of the year. We will have the Fort Mill Christmas Cookie Crawl on Saturday, December the 14th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And registration does open for that this Thursday, November the 14th at 10:00 a.m. And we've partnered with several businesses that along the Cookie Crawl route, the community that gets registered, you will get a cookie tin from the town, and then you're given instructions whenever you pick up your cookie tin on where you will travel to, to the businesses. And at each stop, you will get a delicious, beautiful Christmas cookie at that location. But you will find out all of that information if you get registered, and that is on Thursday beginning at 10:00 a.m. But all of that information is on the town website, fortmillsc.gov, and we will actually be posting the link on how to sign up at that moment on Thursday. And then we have, again, just visit our town website and follow us on social media to get all the updated information.
Any questions, council members? I can say, I never understood the Cookie Crawl piece, but it sure has been awfully popular.
It's very popular.
We tend to get filled up very quickly, so 10:00 a.m.'s an unusual time for those of us that work, but absolutely, if you want to do it, you better register on time. Okay?
It's Christmas cookies, though. I mean, you have to, you know, everybody's got to love Christmas cookies.
I do. We need to sample the vendors.
Yeah.
I think that sounds good. All right. Thank you so much, Jacana.
Thank y'all.
All right. Presentation number three. We will hear from Mariah Price. Mariah's with the Fort Mill Economic Partners, and she's going to talk to us and David Boust about some of the organizational updates. Thank you both for coming.
Yes, thank you so much for having us. I'm Mariah, and yes, we have David, one of our board members here tonight, just to give you an update of what we've been doing this past year and to give you a kind of little bit of a brief overview of what we have planned for next year as well. So, I know it's been a little bit since we've been able to, it's been a few months. So, we are thankful that you've made time for us tonight. These are a few things that we're going to be talking about from what we've done in the past year, our tax grant projects, a new utility improvement grant, and Florence trip that we were able to go with some of town staff and our new appointed executive team. So, one of our major projects that we were able to accomplish through the accommodations tax grant was our new website launch. This officially launched on October 2nd. It's been a long time coming. You can find it, us, at discoverfortmill.org. This is something that we've been working really closely and hard with destination by design, and we're excited to officially have launched and hope that you guys were able to see that press release in our newsletter. One of the new features that we have is a quarterly newsletter that you can sign up on the website that we will be sending out, and hopefully you guys didn't have any issues opening or seeing that newsletter. But on this website, our main goal is we're not just to have what we, our current website or our previous website had, but also to be able to include more of what the live, work, and thrive here in Fort Mill. That really came from one of the Went Up Studies that we did of what makes Fort Mill, why Fort Mill, and that's what this website stemmed from. So, this is something that's going to be ongoing. We're going to be continually updating it, but make sure to save this as a favorite so you can continue to be up to date. So, that was one of the major projects that we were able to accomplish. Next was with town, and the Strawberry Festival Steering Committee was our Strawberry Sprint and Stroll of 2024. We had a new record of close to 1,000 race participants. It was a big turnout, and we were very grateful. We had 53 volunteers. This was the first year we also had a charitable organization. We're looking to continue to doing this, but our first charity was Foundation for Fort Mill Schools. So, these are just some of the pictures that we had collected from the race. Ben Hudgens, you made it on there with your daughter. But it was just a great event, and we were just so impressed with how much the community is involved, and also being able to be part of the Strawberry Festival is a huge blessing. So, thank you, Town, for allowing us to continue to do that. Our last main project from the ATAX was the art mural. So, it was officially approved by Historic Review Board for the art mural to be placed on 105 Claiborne Street. We are still in the works for this. So, Debbie Wissett with Olives is our artist for this mural. So, we are still in the beginning stages, obviously. There hasn't been a mural on the walls yet. We ran into some issues with the building itself, so we're working with the owner to work on the brick mortar before we're able to do the art mural, but we were able to secure that with Debbie and do the design and get that approved with the Historic Review Board. So, we're very excited for that to come.
It's beautiful.
Yes. So, that was a great year for our accommodations tax grant, and we were very grateful. Another thing I'm going to have David speak on that our board was able to do this year is our new utility improvement grant.
Yeah, thank you. We know that there's a tremendous burden when a business wants to move to Fort Mill, and we were charged with trying to figure out a way to lower that burden. This is one of the ideas that was put forward, and frankly, as a civilian, I loved it. Utilities are so much fun. But this could apply to any business need regarding power, gas, water, sewer, grease traps. We're going to be the, our members raised this money and plan to do this yearly, so it's a $15,000 grant. It's to anybody who applies. You do have to meet a couple of requirements. You need to get permits from the Town of Fort Mill. You need to meet the zoning requirements of Fort Mill. We're not going to just hand this out, but at the same time, if you have a real hardship to getting your restaurant open or your business open, we want to make sure that it's lightened a little bit. So, from the Fort Mill Economic Partners, this is now available, and we're hoping to renew this every year, so thank you for the help.
Yes, thanks, David. Another thing we were able to accomplish this year was we were able to visit City of Florence. Some of our board members, as you see in the picture, and some of town staff were able to make the truck down and to visit the city of Florence. We had a lot of great takeaways. We were able to walk around the downtown of City of Florence, and they were able to just walk us through exactly what the last 10 years have looked like for them. It's been a tremendous undertaking that they have done of the growth that they have seen in the new businesses. So, one of the key takeaways that we learned is the partnership with the nonprofit in the city of Florence, and we really were blown away with how well that partnership was. They were able to share with us their MOU agreement, so we would be able to take that away and learn to see how we could be a greater partner for the Town of Fort Mill. The other key takeaway that we had was their incentive programs that they have for the businesses in the downtown area. They have great loan programs set up with banks, local banks, and with the town, the city staff. They also utilize tax credits, and they are very open to sharing with us with their, they've shared with us their loan program and the tax credits that they have. So, it was a great learning experience. They also are part of the Main Street program, which we learned a lot about, and they are, one, partners that are willing to help bring in different Main Streets that want to be part of the program and kind of be your partner through that application. So, it was a great trip. We're very grateful that they allowed us to come and that town staff was also able to join. To wrap up, this year, we had our newly appointed executive team. So, Chair is Elizabeth Bowers, and Vice Chair is Adam Ackerman, our Treasurer is Jan Martin, and our Secretary is Renee Miller. So, we're excited for our new executive team and what the next two years has in store. Moving into our 2025 goals, we're already crazy. It's towards the end of 2024, and we're looking ahead. One of the main things that we were able to apply for the 2024-2025 accommodations tax grant through the Town of Fort Mill, we were awarded $23,568. So, this will cover the remaining of the art mural invoice with Debbie, so we're excited that we'll be able to finalize that this year, and this would also cover our advertisement for the race. So, very grateful for this grant. Moving into the Strawberry Festival, we are looking to do the Strawberry Sprint and Stroll 2025 again. So, planning is underway. It's still in the beginning process, but we are looking to be able to, the website race, to go live in December, and it's going to be on April 26th, so mark your calendars. The routes will still be, remain the same. We're working with town staff, and we're also working with the steering committee to make sure this is another successful race. So, the logo and everything, it will be coming out here soon, so be on the lookout.
It's a great logo. Shirts were great last year.
Yes, I know. We have great partners to help us. The other things that we want to accomplish this year, continuation, like David said, of the utility improvement grant. We really are grateful that our board has supported this, and we are looking forward to be able to help some businesses. Some of our subcommittee work that is looking to be accomplished, obviously, the website maintenance is a huge undertaking, so that's going to be something that we'll continue to work on. Our quarterly newsletter engagement, we want to make sure that it's not just the people that are visiting that aren't, that just visit and walk away, but they're able to keep engagement of this newsletter. So, we're looking to enhance that. And then our Adopt the Highway Quarterly Trash Pickup, we just finished our last one last week, so we're looking to continue to do that as our subcommittee. Another thing that we are really focusing on for 2025 is our board involvement and engagement. We are having some open membership spots, so we want to make sure that we have the right businesses supporting our board, and so we're looking for some more involvement with that. So, that kind of wraps up our planning right now for 2025. Is there any questions or anything that we can answer for you?
I don't have a question, but I do have an observation.
Okay.
I think back on, I don't know, this is my ninth year, and I think back on the conversations very early on as we began to see the Fort Mill Economic Partners come together, and we had a lot of conversations, but not a lot that got done. We just were working through the details of trying to find out, how do we get your feet on the ground? I am so impressed, taken by, this is a beautiful presentation. I see actual success and steps that are beneficial to the economic development in our community, and it goes to all of you that have put many hours of effort into this. The Bailey Bill, the utility improvement grant is just to stroke a genius to try to help businesses cite themselves here. I can't thank you enough for the Adopt the Highway. I believe you do Dobbie's Bridge Road, which I think people intentionally try to make it look bad.
We have picked up about half a Nissan. I don't know if anybody needs that back.
Half a Nissan. I'm going to be looking. But you just are bringing so much, and I hope that you feel the success that we're seeing. So, thank you so very, very much.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that. I think it's, thank you for giving us timely updates back to council, because we like to partner. I think the partners are, you know, great partners, and you're really, you and your board and your, all the members are really engaged in the community. all the members are really engaged in the community, which is, you're really giving, that's what it's all about. You know, get involved, you know, there are, I think the board's great. I think it's, I've seen some great turnaround, great activities and stuff. So we just thank you so much for all you do. It's not easy. It's like herding cats. And so I've, but I really appreciate opportunity to work with y'all and also the, see what progress and things are being done. It's outstanding. So we're setting a pretty high bar.
Yes.
And the website, the new website's fantastic.
It's beautiful.
Discoverfortmill.org.
And bringing that up, that was one of my questions. How are we marketing or advertising the new website out to people?
Right now, we're just using through social media. We do have a separate Discover Fort Mill page on Facebook that we're looking to regularly update everyone knowing about the website. And we've also sent out our press release and hoping to push with the board members too.
Thank you. And then on the grant application, can they go to your website and find that form?
Yes. Yeah, so we were waiting to tell you guys about it first, so you won't see it right this second. But this week, we're putting it up on the website, so you'll be able to find it.
It's incredible.
And how often, I think you said, touch on it, but how often will those decisions be made? Like Mayor said, I think this is wonderful.
So it's a yearly program. We're going to renew every November and so, but we set it up so you can apply anytime. You don't have to wait till November. Apply tomorrow if you want and it's there until the money runs out. So we're hoping that we get people to take us up on it.
That's great. I love it. Thank y'all for doing that very much. Awesome. Any further questions? Hats off to you. Your heart's in it. Thank you so much. Did a great job. We appreciate it. There are no old business items for this evening's agenda, so we'll move into new business items. New business item number one is a resolution for Keep Fort Mill Beautiful. Mina McDonald will present to us.
Hi, Mina. Hi. So I'm very excited to be here as always, but I'm particularly excited to be presenting about this. I think we're all fairly familiar with Keep America Beautiful and we're all going to suddenly learn about Keep Fort Mill Beautiful. So we are already doing a lot out on the streets, including Dobie's, cleaning up town, trying to make sure that we're doing things to keep our waterways clean. So that's how I started with this, of course, through Stormwater Department. And just to give you a little bit of stuff about our volunteer numbers, these are last year's numbers. So soon I will have our finalized 2024 numbers, but I'll give you a little sneak peek. We currently have 73 registered volunteers, so up from the 42. We are sitting right at the 400 mark again with the number of people who have volunteered with us this year. We unfortunately have only gotten 93 tires so far this year. We didn't get to do our big river sweep. You know, Hurricane Helene kind of put the kibosh on getting into Sugar Creek for river sweep. So we missed out on probably about 100 tires there, but.
Did you find the other half of the Nissan?
Actually, I was going to say, I think we had. It was on Springfield Parkway last month. So we also picked up nearly 10,000 pounds of trash this year, even without river sweeps getting to do that this year. So we, we're doing a lot out there, but there is of course always more to do. So Keep America Beautiful, this is a nationwide organization with affiliates all through the country. And y'all may already be familiar with Keep York County Beautiful. They're a wonderful partner agency that we work with already. But we do want to focus in a little bit more on our community here. So things that Keep America Beautiful focuses on litter prevention and education, beautification of your community, and then also community greening. So they have a program all about planting trees. And one of the things that we are looking to do in the Stormwater Department is we are going to be doing some stream stabilization work at some of our local parks where we have stream, Die Branch and Harris Street Park is where we're going to start. And we'll be planting lots of different native plants there to help stabilize that creek bank and then also to beautify the park. We're actually also working with a local Girl Scout who's hoping to get her gold award with us and some master gardeners to design some pollinator gardens over there and at Steel Street Park as well. So the benefits of joining, like what do we get out of it for joining? We get access to the, to the network of all the things that they already have, all the different curriculums that people have already created, programs that are out there. And really the funding side of it, being able to apply for grants that can help us in our efforts. And then all the different, you know, research and information that they have out there that we can utilize. So one thing that I'm very excited, we actually didn't have to pay to join. Palmetto Pride footed the bill for us. They offered to pay our application fee, which was $1,500. So they paid that for us. And then we will, based on our population, we'll be paying an annual renewal fee, which should be around $450. So what do we need? We need to create a committee. So we need a community team of folks who are dedicated to helping beautify our community, helping to get the word out about how we can keep Fort Mill beautiful moving forward, even with all the development that happens. So there'll be a couple of different things that we'll do there. Once we have our committee together, we will get trained from the national organization and we will be able to do a community appearance index, which will be a lot of fun, I think. But we'll be going out, looking around at trashy areas and figuring out where we need to focus. And then we'll also be looking at what we're already doing internally as far as our programs and our outreach and education. And then we'll be able to sort of see some different areas where maybe we have room to grow those programs. So we are going to be putting out a call to create the very first board of Keep Fort Mill Beautiful. Folks will be able to apply. It'll, our current Town of Fort Mill board application will get updated to have this as an other opportunity. But we'd love to encourage, if y'all have anyone in mind when we talk about this and you say, oh, I know somebody who should be on this board, please feel free to encourage them to apply. And that application should get updated, I would think, probably by next week. So yeah, I think that's all I got. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions for Mina?
That's awesome.
It's a lot of information. Goodness, but how wonderful that, again, only a few years ago, we were just trying to pick up trash and clean a creek or two. And this is blossoming, no pun intended, into something very beautiful for our town. So thank you for doing the legwork.
You see the smile on the mayor's face, that I would sum it up because all of us have complained about litter picking. And I think we've, pretty much all of us probably are on some litter committee. I think the litter prevention is outstanding. I think we ought to put big signs coming into town right in right away. Because, you know, about litter, I think, I think, you know, prevention is a big part of it. And I think the greening is also, you're talking about native plants.
Yeah, I love it.
We need to, you know, we want to keep our community healthy and green. So this, thank you so much. I mean, this is, started off with Christmas cookies and Santa, and now we're getting litter. It's a great.
Catch some people in the process.
Well, and there are, that's one of the things that we'll be able to get access to some of the grant funding. There are actually grants you can get for litter prevention officers to, I mean, it wouldn't cover the cost of an entire officer.
Do you get carry a taser?
$30,000 towards, you know, litter prevention officers who can help with that. And then there's also some other things, like with the prevention side of it. You know, when people take their trash to one of our convenience centers, it is supposed to be covered. They are supposed to have a tarp over their load. And a lot of the trash that is on the sides of our streets is coming out of people's trucks as they're driving from their home to a convenience center. And so making sure that people understand that it is the law that you cover that. And being able to get tarps from Palmetto Pride or from Keep America Beautiful to give away to people. That's one of the things that Keep York County Beautiful has done and we'll be able to partner and do that as well.
If you can catch that guy on Harris Street keeps throwing those diapers.
Yeah. I think that's more to that one though.
Yeah.
They are.
Weird about that one.
I'm really disturbed by the number of liquor and beer bottles we find on the side of the road.
Well, David, I can hook you up. There's certain areas on Dobie's Bridge that are. We found two cell phones one time.
Hey, I've had volunteers find hundred dollar bills, so you never know what you're going to find. In fact, we're going to be doing something in the spring called Team Up to Clean Up and we're going to be putting it out there for community groups, organizations, churches, scouts, anybody, town councils, to join us for cleanup efforts in the spring from, basically from Earth Day through May 12th. And we will be doing some fun giveaways and like whoever picks up the most trash will win prizes. And we're just going to try to really encourage all the different groups in our community to get involved and do that.
Mina, you're going to work with the schools because I really think, you know, when we were growing up 100 years ago, they had a lot of education in elementary schools, you know, not to litter. I don't know why it's become that, I've seen people just roll the one and throw trash out. And I was like, where could, where did that become from? I think, so I think starting early in schools would be good. Hopefully there'll be some education programs that we can do on there.
Yes, and in fact, some of the things that we've, we've done this summer with our, you know, Stories and Shaved Ice events that we do. And we had the August event, we were able to bring up the Columbia Marionette Theater and they put on a performance that they call Litter Trashes Everyone. We were able to do that and it was completely free to us because Palmetto Pride pays them to go and do that at any location, like for children. So they've done it at public libraries, but they'll also come out to any of our schools. So that's something that we could help coordinate with our elementary schools to bring that program to them as a part of an assembly for the school.
Amazing. And as sad as it is that we even have to do this, it's amazing how well it has grown, as Mayor talked about. But talk to us a little bit about the hurricane and what that caused downstream in, yeah, here from what happened up above.
Well, we definitely had, for our purposes, we were going to be doing our river sweep that, you know, that next weekend in October in Sugar Creek. And we had partnered with the Riverkeeper there at that location at the River Place in Regent Park. And the water there, Sugar Creek jumped about 20 feet. And then there were multiple sewage leaks from Charlotte Mecklenburg and the E. coli and like coliform counts in that creek were just, if you have something over 1,000, you know, you're, that's, you don't want that, that was over 20,000. So it was pretty significant and it was just not something that we wanted to have our volunteers in. But even on, you know, unfortunately for Sugar Creek, even on a good day, Sugar Creek is in rough shape. I was able to go kayaking down Sugar for a tactical cleanup with the Riverkeeper this summer. And there were about 14 of us. We went in at the River Place, came out at the 160 Bridge, so did about six miles. And we pulled about 3,000 pounds of trash and tires out of Sugar Creek. And we passed by probably three times that much that we just couldn't get because we ran out of space in our boats. So that's another thing that I'm really excited that we'll be able to do next year is be able to sort of have our, have our river sweep again. We'll do our river cleanup there on Sugar with the Riverkeeper in the spring. We're working on figuring out when the date for that will be.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's such a valuable endeavor and such a difficult one too. So thank you so much. With that, council, I need a motion to approve the resolution for Keep Fort Mill Beautiful.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number one.
A second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, how could we refuse? Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. All right. New business item number two. This is the first reading and the public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of town, of the Town of Fort Mill to change the zoning designation for York County tax maps, my favorite thing, 0200601051 and 052 and 053 and 054 and 058 and then 0200607034, containing approximately 15.9 acres from General Industrial and R10, or I think that's supposed to be two, R10, One Family Residential District MXU Mixed Use Development. This is in Ward Two, Ronnie Helms. Penelope Karagounis is our onsite expert on this, but I believe we're getting a presentation this evening. If we would go into the public hearing first, just as housekeeping, if you've come to speak to this, please be orderly. I do have one person signed up, but I see a lot of people out here. So Keith, if you would like to come and speak, that would be wonderful.
Mayor, so I'm going to know that I'm going to have to recuse myself from this discussion and vote. I actually have property in the area, which could be seen as a conflict of interest. So to defer, to keep from having any problems, I'm going to recuse myself, so.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Wolf is recusing himself. He will be able to sit and listen, but he will not vote or participate in the conversation in regards to this topic. Thank you. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem Helms, members of Town Council, Keith McVane with Morgan Allen. I'm actually representing assisting Unique Properties, or Unique USA Inc. with the rezoning request. Just wanted to sign up as part of the public hearing. I know we have a more detailed presentation regarding the adaptive reuse of the historic White Mill. We will do after Chris does his presentation, but just wanted to let you know we were here and excited to present the plans for this unique opportunity to bring this mill back to life as a mixed-use residential community, mixed use for the Town of Fort Mill.
Thank you very much. For those of you that are here, as we remain in the public hearing at this moment, did I have to do a vote to go into the public hearing? I didn't think I did, but I want to make sure I didn't do it improperly. You certainly have every right to step forward and speak if you'd like. We will adhere to the one to three minutes of time for everyone. This is the first time that the issue has been, or the request has been brought before council. So we're hearing this at the same time. So if anyone has a desire to speak that's not here to present the project, now's your time. Anyone? All right. I will close the public hearing. Thank you. All right, for the first reading, I believe we're getting a presentation this evening. So who will be presenting? All right, please come forward. Again.
Sorry, Mayor. You get to see me again.
We're out the carpet. Kidding.
Again, Keith McVane with Morgan Allen. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Savitt, Mayor Protem, members of council, assisting Unique USA with this rezoning request for 104 Williamson. With us tonight is several folks from the family, Johnny Nasser, Jasmine and Steve, as well as Jerry, who worked for Unique USA as well, and then Justin Maxwell, who's our land planner. And also we have Amy with Kimberly Horner available here to answer questions about the traffic study that was performed for the site. I'm going to quickly turn it over to Johnny, who's going to talk a little bit about the family and their vision for the site.
Good evening. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks, council members. It's an honor to be here. We've known each other for many years, but I think you know what the property means to us, but maybe everyone else does not. And I think that statement alone says it all, but you know, if there's one word to take away from tonight, I think the word is legacy. And what I mean by that is, the idea here is to revitalize a piece of Fort Mill's history that's not only meant so much to us as a family, but to everyone in Fort Mill. And in doing so, hopefully we can, you know, leave a perpetual mark on Fort Mill's legacy that can outlast all of us. We'll go through the presentation, but again, I can't speak enough to what this means to us as a family. I don't think our family would be here today. Our business certainly wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the leap of faith that the Springs family took in selling us this building in 2005, when at least Jasmine and I were only 15 years old at the time. And the story is much longer than I would like to get into this evening. Some of you already know the story, but just know that this isn't some private equity backed project. It's family owned and operated. And it is certainly our intention to keep it that way as, you know, as we hopefully see it all come to fruition. And it's been, you know, it's been wonderful to work on this thus far, but to see it come to life, I think will make all of us proud again, leave a legacy that will outlast all of us. And yeah, I think in closing, just the pre-read on the pre-sale of the units, we're at about 98%. So if any of y'all need a unit, call me, 803-242-9749. But no, thank you again for the time. Joke set aside, I think, I think you guys will like what you see here. And what a beautiful segue from keeping Fort Mill beautiful to this. So we look forward to it. Thanks again.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you. Thank you, Johnny. And quickly, we'll just go through the presentation, the team that's part of the assisting Unique USA. BB&amp;M is the architect, DPR the land planner, Morgan Allen just doing some rezoning work. As you're familiar with the site, as you mentioned, just over 15 acres located 104 Williamson, just south of downtown on Railroad. Railroad Avenue. A closer-up view of the site itself. Again, property currently developed with the historic Fort Mill manufacturing plant number two, Luna Mill, the white plant, as former other names that has been used in the past. Here's an aerial photograph of what it looks like today. The application has been submitted to SHIP, SHIPPO, for historic credits. And that's, the first phase of that is almost complete and making good progress to allow the renovation of the historic mill with historic tax credits. The zoning on the site, as you mentioned, zone General Industrial. There's a small piece that's zoned R10, which is actually where the water plant and parking lot exists. The proposed zoning is MXU to allow a conditional, a conditional plan to allow a mixed-use residential community to be developed on the site, utilizing the existing mill. There is a new building that will be part of the, of the adaptive reuse of the site. This is the land use plan. We are consistent with the Town Center mixed-use category of the 2040 Plan. This rezoning will implement that vision for this site. This is the, our conceptual plan. It does call for the, I don't know, that won't show up on there. The red line you see on there is the realignment of existing Watson. It'll be built as a new public street with new sidewalks, planting strips, on-street parking. There will be new sidewalks along Williamson and Link Street, as well as on Railroad. There will be up to 147 units in the existing mill, and there will additional 78 units in the, in the new building that will be on the, on the north side of Watson. There will also be ground floor retail. There'll be a minimum of 20,000 square feet of commercial uses on the ground floor of the new building. Could be up to 25,000. There will, there'll be parking, utilizing parking that's in existence there today on both, on the other side of Williamson, and then new parking behind the new building and just to the south of the existing mill. The next slide just shows you some of the cross-sections for the streets and how they'll be improved. There are pedestrian improvements planned for the intersection of Railroad and Academy that were part of the traffic study recommendations for the site. And then this is just an illustrative plan that shows you the, how, how we envision the site to look at completion. Open space areas along Williamson, open space areas at, next to the new building, and then improvements to the, to the existing infrastructure. I think here, I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry to quickly go over some of the other slides and the images for the building.
I also want to thank all of you for allowing us this presentation. This is day number 981 since we've started this process, with an awful lot of help from the township planning department, which has been really, really critical. I guess the point I'm trying to make is that this was not a, let's jump and get this thing done. It's been a very slow process, making sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, and we have a product of excellence for the township. Keith has already told you all about the, a team that we have assembled, the professional team that's been helping us along the way. And what I'd like to do is just go through some of these slides. It's just this button right there. Yeah. That kind of gives you some idea of what this ultimate project will look like. The top picture on the left is a 1937 picture of what that looked like. And we've tried to recreate that isometric view, showing what potential we could be at. The building that's to the left of Watson is a four-story structure, under 60 feet tall. The bottom will be a minimum of 20,000 square foot of retail, and the top will be 78 apartments. And from that top floor of that apartment, you'll have views of downtown Charlotte as well from there. That'd be really outstanding. This is standing at the end of Railroad. And if you look up by that car, you can see the old mill. That's what it would look like going up the street that way. This is being at the end of Watson, looking towards Williamson, the new building on our left, and the redevelopment of the old mill. Some of the pictures that we found from our historic consultant, Heather Fernback, that when the building was built, there was more glass than there was brick at the first time through. And you'll see in some of these pictures how we're gonna recreate that. We're gonna be required, not only by the historic registry, but also by the historic committee here of the township as well. Some of the amenities, there'll be obviously a pool, and there'll be some type of a gym and other amenities that the residents will be able to enjoy. This, we're gonna go back and recreate the main entrance that was at the mill at that time, and keep the stone monument at the top. And this is a section along Railroad that we're hopeful, we're not there yet, we're having to deal with Southern Norfolk. In order to get this approved, there's some right-of-way issues, but we'd like to have a pedestrian and bike walkway along there to help to access the center of Fort Mill as well. We're also trying to get some intersection-raised walkways to get from Railroad and Academy to Main Street. And we're getting a little bit of pushback from the Railroad.
I'm sorry. It's not funny, but it is. Good luck with that.
They're so easy to communicate with.
Yeah.
But we've, we've been able to make some decent progress with them. And this just shows you potential what some of the interiors could look like. So I really look at this as a project of excellence. It's, the family has dedicated an awful lot of interest and financial backing to make this happen, and to make that old building really look like something amazing over there. I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
Council members?
The current photos, where are those from? Or is that just a rendering?
These photos here were from other projects that the architect that is part of the team has done.
A similar mill, an old mill that they renovated. So these are interiors of a mill in another location.
That month, I think it was in, yeah.
Renovated for residential units.
What type of square footage are you looking at in each unit?
The average for a one-bedroom will be a little over 1,000 square feet. And then the two-bedrooms get up above 1,400 square feet. There are some studios that'll be in the 900 square foot. And then there'll also be a very small percent, 4% of three-bedroom apartments as well. The, the building, the geometrics of the building, and the requirements of the historical registry doesn't allow us to make the absolute best use of the square feet. The building is 318,000 square feet. And if everything goes, the plan that we see it, there'll be about 57,000 to 60,000 square feet that will be open atriums inside of the building. So the, the depth of the apartments are really quite generous.
Now, I know you said you're going through the process with the, with the State Historic Preservation Office.
SHIPPO and.
To SHIPPO, yeah.
And MPS, yep.
To, so where are you at in that process as far as getting added to the historic registry?
Great question. We, we've had a lot of preliminary conversations with both organizations, MPS and SHIPPO. And we've shared a lot of preliminary drawings. And today, we formally submitted our Part One. We are expecting that if everything goes smoothly, the end of March 2025, beginning of April, we should have our final approval.
Okay.
And that kind of works really hand-in-hand as the architect is designing all these elements, you know, to, to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements.
I have a question. I was able to attend the community meeting, and at that time, there was a parking deck that was mentioned. Where would it be located? And will it have to, obviously, I would imagine, follow the historical standards that the rest of the structure has? And what are your thoughts on all the parking, additional parking that these residences will bring in commercial?
Yes, sir. This is where the second deck would have gone. It would have created approximately 100 parking spaces. We had preliminary construction estimates of $3.5 million. We've shared with Penelope and her team and Chris. They've done a lot of research on it, and have since, we've taken that piece out at their direction.
Okay. So buffering for the surrounding houses, I know to the left of the L-shaped building, I see, you know, there's some residential there. And what type of buffering are, are we offering here? I know Mayor Funderburke's old house, not that he's asked, I didn't even talk to Danny about this, but I know he was at the meeting. There's a whole line of homes that right, right up there, up to that.
Let Justin answer that question. He's from DPR. Were, meet the minimum requirements?
I go, it's 25 or 30-foot buffer yard with plantings.
Yeah, I've seen some evergreens, those things in the packet here. So, okay. All right.
It will meet all the requirements, for sure.
So parking for the print shop, I see that, you know, that looks like it could be altered. I mean, how will, how will that be handled? Or, I mean, or have y'all been in discussions, I'm sure?
Very closely with the two famous guys in the back.
That they are.
And actually, today, we, we met with them prior to this meeting and showed them a couple of options of how they can reuse the second parcel behind the print shop, how they could potentially become a tenant in the building, and what would happen with, with their brewery, and possibly move that part inside. And so they've got three options. They're walking out of here tonight to see how it can all work. But they're, they're on our radar screen, for sure.
So what other ideas for commercial in that meeting? You mentioned a grocer at the time. I mean, what are some possibilities? Or do you have any, I know you probably can't say a name, but, I mean.
Yeah. Trader Joe's was a suggested, and I, from that meeting in December.
We keep trying.
Yeah. Well, I spoke to Ms. Drew a couple of times, and she initially told me no when she asked what the parking, I'm sorry, what the traffic counts were, and they obviously didn't meet. And then probably a couple of weeks after that, she called me back. She goes, I'm gonna take no off the table, but we'll keep an open mind if you keep us informed about it. So I, I think if grocer, that might be our best chance, because they all, even when we talked to, not, was it Sprouts? Yeah. They all said, the first thing they said, what's the traffic counts and how does it?
Give them the traffic counts for Tom Hall.
So you're saying there's a chance?
I'm saying it's an open chance. One thing I want to add, because Kimberly Horn's here tonight, we did do.
Hey, I want to talk to Amy, too, but I'll wait after you.
Yeah, we did do two traffic impact analysis for this project. Initially, there was 43 townhomes, and we took the townhomes out. We had to do another one. So the modifications that were required, we completely agree with. They were very, very minor, and they're reflected on some of the civil drawings that you've seen here tonight.
Well, I want to say thank you for looking at another option and the 900 days you've put into it, with us only having a couple of days, and just seeing this presentation for the first time. I do have some concerns, particularly when it comes to the trip count. When you look at how many residential units that you're going to be putting in here, the roads that you're putting on around that area were mill roads that aren't in the best of shape. While I understand you've got a focus and DOT is recommending certain improvements within that area, I will tell you upfront, my concern is the roads that are just past where you're touching with this project, because it's not something that's been on, it's on our radar, but it's not in our budgets right now to improve the roads that are there or the sidewalks, and having the finance available, financing available to be able to support that. So just know, that's something that's a concern for me, particularly when you look at going over the Railroad Avenue. Railroad Avenue itself is something that we have been addressing. Mina, that was just here, put together a great opportunity for a grant to fix that. Have you looked at past the footprint, past the blue dotted lines in the presentation?
Only through the traffic impact analysis.
Okay.
Not, not past that. We'd be more than welcome to take a look at it to see really what that all entails, but we haven't gone past the, the traffic impact analysis.
Yeah. Because I mean, for perspective, coming down Monroe Way, because it changes names, you know, coming from where you're proposing, coming in front of the church, you know, to Tom Hall, we've already got some congestion that happens in that area. This four-way intersection right here can be a lot, particularly during church times. So just know, that's a concern of mine as we start looking in this a little bit more.
Truly noted. I'll take some looks into that and see what I can come up with.
Watson Street. What's the, I see the realignment there. Was there any plans? I'd heard one point about making it one-way, or was a suggestion about that, or?
We've increased, it's actually, will be the equivalent of a, of a four-lane road, because there'll be parallel parking on both sides, and then an increased width lane in each direction. So it'll still be a two-way street. It'll be much wider with plantings and widened sidewalks. The detail that's in the presentation, I think on the second or third page, really gives you a good understanding of what we're gonna do on that street.
And who would own that street at that point?
Who owns the street?
It'll be turned over to the city of Fort Mill. It'll be a public road. Abandon the old right-of-way and build a new public street to your standards.
Do we currently have Watson, Chris? I think it's important for those that don't deal with roads every day. The town's not in the business of roads, and we appreciate everyone that we work with getting those traffic studies. We don't get to make decisions about a one-way street or a partial one-way street. The DOT does. They're about as easy to work with as the railroad. So, you know, needless to say that it is an ongoing effort. I understand Lisa's concerns. I think we all have concerns. I cuss people on the Watson Street every time I use it, and I do use it. So they get too close. It's never been a great street for Fort Mill, even when I was a kid. So, you know, I certainly think that we want to have these discussions, but by no means are we attempting to put on to you any requirement that you take on more than your project. It's up to us to determine if the impacts from your project are something the town, the state, the RFATS group would handle. So that is, that's why we ask those questions. I just want to make sure you understand.
I appreciate that.
Everybody I've talked to about this project that has seen the original presentation and has heard about it, the existing mill, it's been nothing but great feedback. Everybody would love to see that. The heartburn comes in with the new building, and having a four-story structure there. Can you, can you talk to what has the need for making that a four-story structure there? And have you looked at anything with a smaller footprint, or not as tall?
Well, the initial iteration had townhomes over there, and the feasibility of renting the townhomes was a decreasing interest. And there isn't a builder anywhere in the state of North or South Carolina that's willing to take on building and having to sell one unit to this person, one unit to the, and be ultimately responsible. So we start looking at the return on investment for what the improvements can be, and how do we maximize that. And we've worked closely with Penelope and her team, and we realized that there was certain elevations, distances that we could not exceed, and 60-foot was it. And as we started putting together and understanding the slope of that land, the four stories became viable as it fit within the requirements of the township. I think the second iteration may have been just three floors, two floors of apartments and retail. But when we realized we could go one more floor up, that we, we wanted to at least show that and have that discussion.
So these are true apartments? They would not be townhomes? They would be sold?
It's all, it's all market value rent.
I think it's important to note, too, I didn't know this strangely, but the Greens at the head of Main Street are four-story. So I do think design will be critical if this moves forward in making sure that they blend in and aren't as obtrusive as they could be. So I do think that's something that I'm sure you would have to work with the Planning Commission and others as you look at that type of design. But I was a little surprised, because I always thought they were three-story, but they're actually four.
Yeah. SHIPPO is gonna have a lot of say about that continuance of that Main Street feel. That, that is gonna be part of, we know that already. And then additionally, the township's historic committee gets to review those as well and have their input on it. So.
Only if it's in the historic district?
No, if they get a historic designation, then they fall under.
Historic review.
Historic review. Isn't that right, Chris?
Yes. And I don't know, I mean, obviously, the mill would be on the National Register. This, I don't know if they would consider the new building part of that, but that, that would be the only question as to whether it's a PC or an HRB review.
The, the information that I saw this morning, actually over the weekend, was that they will have some input on the four stories, for sure.
I know you mentioned about the, the parking deck behind the, the new building going away. Can you show that on there, where, where your parking areas are? And you have a parking deck, right? But not a second?
Correct. It's, it's a ground, surface parking.
No, there is no parking.
All surface parking.
All surface parking. And so our ratios are 1.5 per apartment and 3.5 per 1,000 square feet of commercial.
So there's parking behind the new L-shaped building on the left-hand side, and then there's.
Which is where the original parking deck was going to be, right?
Correct.
So that's just all surface parking now?
And then there's some parking at the new intersection of Watson and Williamson in front of the existing mill right there. Then there's some parking on the other side of Williamson that's already existing parking that was there as part of the, the mill itself. There's a water tank. There's a small parking lot there. And then in the, in the bow of Williamson, there's additional parking there that's actually already there. It'll be, it'll be refurbished. There'll be new planting strip, new sidewalk put in, new buffering put in, next to the existing. put in next to the existing homes, but then parking will, will still be there. And then there's a good amount of parking to the right-hand side or the south side of the mill that Chris has shown. That's, that's where the, how the parking is placed.
Where the, not the area that's right in the bow as you referred to, but there's another area, little upper right, the upper right section where it's kind of under where it says existing parking to be improved, under that little section right there. Is that the area where you proposed going away from the 25-foot buffer and just going to an eight-foot tall wall?
There's two pinch points, I think, Justin.
Yeah, the two pinch points are actually in that long linear parking lot. Yeah, right, right there.
It's shown here.
They're essentially where existing parking is now. Yeah. Jerry's pointing to it. Go right where the pinch is.
As well as anybody.
Right there, right. He just drew the blue box right there.
So existing parking is much closer than-
But that section that curves right there?
Right there.
That continues up to your right. Keep following that along. That's where it's proposed.
Just those two.
All down along that area to have just an eight-foot fence instead of the normal 25-foot set by?
It would just be in the pinch points where we get within that 25-foot required. So just really at those corners wrapping around where we can't make that.
But in the other areas along there and around the other parking areas, that would be the normal 25-foot buffer?
Yep.
So Watson, you mentioned like some sort of like a Main Street kind of concept. So the new building and the older one will have sort of like a little street feel, Main Street on both sides or just not, or just the commercial side? You mentioned parallel parking.
Both sides will have, there should, there's going to be a continuity of design. So it is, our intention is to bring the Main Street feel into Watson with that structure there.
Right.
So it wouldn't be commercial on the other side, but walkout garden style, a little green space in front of it.
Right.
So you're activating both sides of the street, not just one?
Amy, can you, can I ask Amy a few questions?
Of course, of course.
Or Penelope or Amy?
Yeah. Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce Amy Massey, but for the audience, I want everybody in council and the mayor to know that our traffic consultant is Kimley Horn. So Amy works for the town of Fort Mill. When we do traffic impact analysis, we have a contract, the town has a contract with Kimley Horn, and then the applicant does pay for those services. So Amy, oh, there you are. She can come up and answer any questions, but I just wanted to make that clear first.
Everybody understand Amy works for us. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Amy.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Nice to have you.
Good evening.
I don't know that that thing ever really projects.
We can hear you.
Okay, good.
Gotcha.
I'll talk loud.
We're not running you off. We just need to ask her some questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead. So on this slide, from left to right, can you walk me through, as someone who is not a pro of traffic mitigation, of what the mitigation's going to be and the road widening and additional sidewalks or whatever the improvements are? Is that okay?
Sure, sure. I'm not going to be able to say a whole lot about left to right and looking around the site specifically, except for that there will be a requirement of five-foot sidewalks along all site frontages. Okay. So it's not there or it needs to be redone or whatever. That's going to be a requirement of this development to do. This study, this transportation impact analysis or TIA, as was stated earlier, we did a TIA originally and then we did do a TIA update that was reflective of the changes of land use. That, that study, we're just going to refer to it as the TIA, but the TIA update is really what it was that I'm referring to. It studies the impact on weekdays during AM and PM peak hours at intersections. And those intersections were selected as study intersections during the scoping process. And that's the very first step of the TIA. So just as a reminder, the TIA starts with scoping, whereas the town staff and Kimley Horn comes up with all the parameters. Then that information then goes to the SEDOT and also York County, just more as a courtesy. Sometimes they have roads involved, so it's just a good idea to have them involved as well. They provide their input back to us and then we have a scoping meeting with the developer, between the town and the developer. So that's the overall process. Once the TIA is reviewed by the towns first, then the TIA is signed and sealed and submitted to all the other folks, including SEDOT, York County, and the development team, as well as the town. So that's the overall process before developing what we'll call, y'all probably are familiar, a TMA or Transportation Mitigation Agreement. And that is what lays out the various responsibilities of the development. And that's been signed and it's been reviewed, signed, submitted, and that's all been taken care of. Now to answer your question, Mr. Moody, the, there are no intersections around this particular site, specifically bordering it, that have improvements associated with it from an intersection like laneage, you know, two lanes here, two lanes there. There's no turn lanes being added. None of that is being proposed as part of the TMA. There are actually not any other intersection improvements that have been recommended by the TIA and approved via all the agencies that review the TIA. And the reason for that is because the levels of service, grade A through F, those levels of service were C or better, which is considered acceptable in all cases at all the intersections that we studied, except for one, and that's the Academy intersection with Main. There, we had a D, which is an unsignaled intersection. It's the stop-controlled, we'll call it northbound approach at the stop sign, a D in the morning, which is standard Fort Mill for that type of intersection, and an E in the PM peak hour. Now, E was the before and after condition. As you stated earlier, Mayor Savage, it's an impact study. So we're limited to what the impact of the site is. In that case of the E, it was a five-second impact by the site traffic generation and, and there was no change in level of service. It was E to E. So therefore, not to mention, there's not a whole lot of room to do anything there. So you're limited, you're constrained. That's why we had recommended in lieu of doing an actual vehicular, you know, for cars improvement, we had recommended doing a pedestrian improvement there. And that's what had been brought up previously by the development team, the potential for doing that. That was actually in the TMA, but there's also a feasibility component. It was also brought up about the railroad and there would have to be work done within the towns, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but the town has an easement agreement with Norfolk Southern of some sort to have those parking, you know, the row of parking along there. And so the DOT was in favor of that. We had a lot of back and forth about a pedestrian improvement, about what it would look like, what were feasible options. And they did agree with one. And that was the raised intersection that had been brought up earlier. That's all true. However, what was determined based upon additional coordination was DOT had a caveat with that in favor of. And that was that there'd have to be a few spaces removed from that area, causing work to be done within the railroad right-of-way in order for that improvement to become feasible. And that wasn't seen, at least at this time, as a feasible option. And so there is a quote out in the TMA that says if it's deemed unfeasible or the town didn't want to remove those spaces or, you know, those kinds of factors, then that improvement will not be made. Now, I also heard it mentioned a while ago about the possibility of the development working with Norfolk Southern in terms of having some additional pedestrian connectivity along there. So if there were additional coordination with the railroad, I don't know if that's becomes a possibility to make that improvement or not. It's questionable.
They pretty much have said to us multitudes of times that they'll do pretty much anything we want if we give up that crossing. You know, that has been a longstanding Hatfield and McCoy type of feud that we just are not willing to do that until it's for the right reason.
Are you, may I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Are you referring to Sprat, the Sprat Crossing? Okay.
You know, the one where the 18-wheelers used to get stuck on it, on the railroad because they weren't supposed to go down that hill? Yeah. It's been forever that we've been in discussion and it's always a flag to say, well, if you give up that, we can do a pedestrian crosswalk. We can do a lot of things. But, you know, there's only one intersection they want, so it better be for a really good reason.
And that does actually serve as another connection into the site, which is another reason why there's not really any major impacts because there's good distribution of traffic. There's a lot of ways in and there's a lot of ways out, but that's one of those key.
Well, it's a key point for emergency services if the other crossing area at the foot of Main is closed off because of a train. You know, so we have to take into account the instances of what could happen and make sure that we have the capability to respond from our locations to an emergency on the other side of the tracks. So it's a little more complicated than it appears. It's not just a your move, you know, kind of situation. So we do look at that and it is important for us to hold that until we know we have the opportunity to safely respond when needed.
So is the blue, the UNC blue throughout this whole thing, explain that to me. Are those areas where sidewalks are going to be? What is, what is that, what does the blue represent?
So, Mr. Moody, that if I may, that is just a site plan, a concept plan that was turned in because of the rezoning application by the developer. So questions for this site plan is for Mr. McBean.
Okay.
I can quickly answer it. It's related to the sections, the sections that are on the second sheet.
Right.
Of outlining what improvements we're providing. So the blue is just sidewalk improvements, tree line improvements. The pink is the Watson where we're doing full streetscape re-alignment. I think those are the two options, believe me.
So I see you have a possible linked street, potential linked street realignment. Elaborate a little more here. Could someone give me some feedback or more information on what makes it potential and what makes it-
Real?
-going to happen? I don't, no way I said that doesn't sound like a jerk. I'm just asking a question because I don't know.
It's a really odd angle road right now.
Right.
And so as we work through the detailed design of how you get in and out of the parking, it may make sense to realign it just for ease of access in and out of our site. We don't want, we don't want our site connecting, our parking lot connecting right on a turn on the curve, anything like that. So wherever we can kind of realign it and our, our project has the property on the north or, well, south side also. So we have some flexibility as far as property ownership to really make that the best alignment possible. So we're-
Would it be more like a 90-degree angle instead of?
Potentially 90 degrees and the T-intersection basically they could come in, just something that's a little more efficient because it kind of comes down and then it's more than 90 to turn kind of back up to Williams.
Right, yeah.
So we're just kind of making sure every, everything is covered in this rezoning. We don't have to go back and ask for something.
Amy, I wanted to ask about the TIA side of it. We're looking at here around the property. It is just around the property. What you guys looked at, did you look at the industrial traffic? What will be the truck route for servicing the retail piece of this? Because as the mayor mentioned, going over what railroad avenue is right now isn't an option. Going down railroad avenue isn't an option. You know, is, where would industrial traffic go to service any of the businesses, any of the retail?
Larger commercial track.
Yes. 18-wheelers.
Like delivery trucks and stuff like that.
Trash trucks, yeah, all of that stuff.
We didn't do a specific truck routing type scenario. We normally would not for, like if we had a quarry, for example, and we do study those sometimes, we do do specific routing for the trucks versus the passenger cars. For a mixed-use development like this, we wouldn't typically do that, knowing that there are some trucks associated, but we are in a downtown area. So I understand your question, where you're coming from. But we didn't specifically do truck routing. I don't know if the site development team has looked into that at all, but we looked at the overall traffic impact and not specifically for something different for trucks versus cars. But that's a good question.
Well, and for me, Penelope and Chris, I would say from our viewpoint of staff, any retail development that we're looking at doing, there's an industrial trucking component to it. And that needs to be in the traffic count and that needs to be supporting the roads. When I look at beside Love's Truck Stop, and granted, I know that saturation of them pulling out of the truck stop, but the road itself is collapsing right there and we are having issues with it. We need to plan for that as we're doing it. I've already brought up the fact that these roads are narrow in this area. You know, the grid between Tom Hall and Main Street and the railroad and Banks is not intended for 18-wheelers to be going through there. So I have some concerns with that.
And for that matter, I will pull us back in again to who resurfaces, who builds, because our roads were not built for the number of Amazon trucks and UPS trucks that are coming in every day. And I'm guilty, guilty, guilty. But they're not built to last as long when they have that level of transportation on them. These were built for actual city streets, you know, just small-town streets. So that is something that we need to make sure we're discussing with, and I am with Lisa on this, when anytime we've got a commercial component, we need to consider what deliveries would look like. And that needs to be a part of our evaluation on what's good, what's not. Now, in my head right now, and it just could be because it's nighttime, but if you got a Trader Joe's, I believe the community would hand stuff down over the railroad themselves instead of taking a truck, you know? I'm just saying.
Never been to one, but that's okay.
Well, we get, we get that question so frequently, you know? It is just on and on and on. Could you do it? Could you do it? That I believe you'd have a lot of help getting it in there. But I do think that needs to be a component of our research moving forward.
And I would just, I'm not, I'm not the one asking questions, but-
Why not?
Well, I guess I can be. I would re-ask the development team if they've taken that into account because for the, I'll tell you the uses that we considered in the traffic study, just in terms of what the trip generation was for, because I know there's some other things being discussed about possibilities. In this TIA update, we had 17,500 square feet of like strip retail. We had 7,500 square foot sit-down restaurant and then the 256 apartments is what we studied. Now, a couple of notes about that. The, because you have the mix of uses, the MXU, there's internally captured trips amongst those uses that are taken into account based upon our national standard calculations. And then there's also pass-by trips, okay? Pass-by trips are the, think of, you're going by a grocery store and instead of on your way home, you take a right in and a right back out. You're already on the road, you're just making an extra turn. That's pass-by trips. And then there's also a credit for the existing square footage on the site, which is typically what we would do. In this case, we took a nominal assumption of warehouse, less trips, just to give something, to give a credit for that. We also looked at, because this question did come up somewhere along the process of like, what would a comparison be if this did stay industrial, right? It could be the warehouse, 60, 65, whatever it was, AM peak trips and same for the PM peak. But it could also, it's my understanding, be a light industrial or manufacturing. So if we looked at those as, I can find it in my notes here, if we looked at those, then we would have potentially 235 morning trips, 200, I'm saying peak, peak hour, 235 morning peak trips and 241 PM peak trips. That's as light industrial. And without considering the warehouse subtraction on the trip generation that we did run, you're looking at 186 and 221 for this proposed site. So again, 235 potential in the morning compared to being proposed, 186 and 241 versus 221. So definitely more. There's more of a potential if you were to do light industrial or manufacturing as opposed to warehouse. So that just at least gives you like a lay of the land in terms of that. But I would go back to what was laid out in the plan and ask, I know that's kind of a big picture, high-level view, but like where you're putting your, your dumpsters and like things like that. How does that relate to wherever y'all would think the trucks would go?
No, I mean, it's, it's something we'll work through as we get into the design. So we 100% have to consider it. We totally understand.
I share that because I know when you go through Kingsley, quite often there'll be a food service provider that just camps right in the middle of the main road going through, right in front of the restaurants, in front of Epic, and it just really-
Well, leaving behind Main Street, you know?
Well, even behind Main Street, you know? Yeah, when it's delivery time, you can't get a parking place and you almost can't get through. So that's definitely something we have to consider. And even to Gwen's point, with that much residential, you're going to have a lot of delivery drivers. I think that's one place we need to be more cognizant of is the places that delivery drivers are going to be able to park their vehicles and so forth. If we're only planning 1.5 parking places for homes that, you know, and my house is guilty, we have three, we have five cars, six cars and a three-car driveway. Guess where they are, you know, on the road? And that's what's going to end up happening in this area. I don't recommend it, we're trying to fix it. Kids need to move out. Well, I have no choice. But, you know, I think that's one thing, especially if we're looking at apartments that are not studio apartments with just a single person, my guess is the demographics we're hitting are not going to be single people, affordable housing in this area, that it's going to be people with more than one vehicle coming in there and needing parking places. So I think we have to be cognizant of what is going to be affecting afterwards. And again, to the point, you brought up railroad avenue coming into Main Street. I literally walked across the railroad today after our Veterans event and it is not optimal of how we're handling that. It's something we've discussed for a long time of how do we fix? And we're going to be adding 600 more cars that while, yes, they can disperse a little bit easier, coming out by our current town hall and turning the left or right there on Tom Hall Street from Norway is not optimal. I mean, it's congested. So I think we have to look at the main places people are going to go and that's not in this footprint. It's three more roads out from it.
Right, and we, this isn't actually what we studied, just to be clear, yeah. It did go further out than there and we did look at where we thought the most impactful, the most impacted intersections, you know, what they would be, where we have turning traffic and Monroe, Monroe White was one of those. We had a 30% impact tagged to that intersection with Tom Hall specifically. So yes, we did go beyond just looking at this. And we didn't really look a whole lot at the details of this because we looked further out.
Thank you.
What is the typical radius of a study, like you mentioned, further out for something like this?
One mile.
Mile, okay.
Yeah, we went through all the same arguments and studies with the greens too and they didn't tell it there. I mean, they don't impact anything. The only thing I see that would really impact would be the commercial end.
How many units are in the greens, Chris?
Sixty-four, I think.
Sixty-four?
What are the, what's the makeup of that as far as, are they rental, are they owner-occupied?
They're all rentals.
Some of them are corporately rented, but they're all rentals. That brings me to just an area that gives me heartburn is, is the rental aspect of it, of having the rental apartments. That's one thing that we've discussed over the years of not having apartments is you don't really get that buy-in to the community where you have rentals. It could be somebody transient just here for a couple of months. So the rental aspect versus an owner-occupied, can you, can you talk about that?
I don't imagine us having a lease less than a year on any of the apartments. The town home or condominium aspect would be very, very difficult to accomplish and be able to get a return on the investment in that fashion because you're selling off small sections of that particular, we'll call it a condominium. So, and the builders are very reluctant to go down that route.
Have you looked at any 55 and up options that would be less of a trafficked impact? And same for the parking? I mean, with the typical apartment setup, there's going to be people in all these parking areas that are close to residency, or residence, rather. It's going to create a lot of, you know, all during the night, coming and going and a lot of traffic, but you know, going back to the original question, I guess have you or looked at the 55 and up aspect of?
Carrie, can you turn the air down in here before I have a strike? I mean, are you hot back there too? I'm about to croak up here.
Just tell us, X-Tom Tulsa, hundreds of liters take off soon.
I'm usually the one that freezes us out in here, but sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize, but.
What would note about the parking? The way the ordinance reads, it allows us to have 16 units per acre and that's how we get to the 256, but we're at 225 and we have surplus based on the ratio of 1.5 per apartment and 3.5 per commercial. We have more than what that, Penelope's been very clear that we could have any overflow parking to assist the township. So we've really maximized the use of property and leaving enough green space as well.
Yeah, I think to the, you know, the situation, and I'm a huge proponent of fewer apartments, if at all possible, from a citizenship and a buy-in to the community. But I do know that with the interest rates where they are and the market taking the turn that it has, that oftentimes apartments are affordable housing for people these days or workforce housing. And that's a, that's a shift, that's something that is different. I think for me personally, I just want to try to better understand how we would accommodate the actual traffic and pedestrians because we do have some areas that even we need to make improvements at the foot of Academy and Main, the foot of Academy and Main. We need to make some improvements. So, you know, aside from that, it shows that you've been working on this for over 900 days. It does, it does. Johnny, I'm curious, would you be able to tell us how many trucks at the peak of your use of the building?
Yeah, that's a great point because as we're talking about that, that's the first thing that came to my mind. There are days where we're unloading four 53-foot trailers each day, each working day throughout the day. So that alone.
Not speaking to FedEx and UPS pickups, that's just merchandise coming in, so.
And we've not seen them. So where would they be entering and exiting?
How do they get there?
Yeah, how are they getting there now?
So they would be going, in this case, for the ones that didn't get stuck going over the railroad tracks. They would typically be advised to take a turn on Main Street and come up through Watson that way because that's where our warehouse unloading area would have been. FedEx and UPS could have gone over the railroad tracks and take a right turn to the side of the building and go all the way down. So those were, you know, those were the other loading areas, but they were all railroad tracing.
All Watson Street. Four loading docks, two are adjacent to the railroad and two are across the street from the print shop on Watson.
One of the last things I want is to push the larger trucks up Main Street. We've had a longstanding issue with, when it was Bradley Park, you know, trying to get people to not, the state made us take down the signs that said trucks this way. So it's something that I don't want to force trucks up Main. But I think it's important to note how often would they actually be delivering, you know, got to know, got to figure that out.
It wouldn't be uncommon in a development like this where the tenants are given a set of regulations and requirements. I think of some that are in South Park where they're only allowed to take deliveries with something that's 26-foot or less and that's something that they have to arrange with their suppliers that it has to be delivered that way. We could certainly look into that aspect of it for this community.
But even the moving trucks, so to your point, you know, even somebody moving in and out, particularly if you're looking at apartments, I think you have to plan for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and make sure that you're prepared for it. And I think that's the hard part about this project is there are so many pieces, many pieces that we don't even touch or have a say in, starting with the historic designation for it. And for me right now, us even having a public hearing with an out knowing that historic piece of it, what's the timing on that?
He said March 25.
At the beginning of April, we should have final approval.
Okay.
So also know if, you know, if it does not get designated as a historic, you know, we still have to go through a process if this rezoning. So like they mentioned, you know, if it gets designated from Chippewa, then it'll go through a historic review board. If it, you know, if it does not, then it goes through the planning commission through a commercial appearance review.
I would like to, for everyone, both here tonight and watching futuristically, to know that once we change a zoning, we're going to do everything, if this is going to happen, to lock in that zoning with that proposed family in use. We don't want to rezone and have the property sold and then we be held hostage to whatever under the new zoning. So I've already talked to our attorney about making sure when we do some type of sale and transfer of property that we do everything we can. If it's reversionary, I'm not sure, I'm not an attorney. But there has to be some way to prohibit future use that isn't consistent with what's been presented or worked on for 900 days.
And some of, if I may, Mayor, some of the comments that council has made, some good points, just an advisory recommendation, maybe because this is an MXU, put something in the development conditions so it goes with the property. Now, we don't have 25 acres or more to go into a development agreement, but some of the issues about, you know, moving or having a wider area for trucks for delivery, I mean, that could be something to put in because this group has not gone into full civil design drawings. Sure. So they can't answer those questions, but that, those are great points that you can add if you wish as a recommendation to the development conditions.
That was going to be one of my questions on page 17, number six, amendments to the MXU concept plan. It mentions conditions may be applied for by the then-owner or owners of the applicable development area or portion. So that was kind of one of my points is whether this can, you know, we go down this road, approve this thing and then, okay, we're going to shift gears, we're going to sell it to somebody else, so.
And they could, but I think.
We're just trying to protect the future, that's all.
Yeah.
They would be held to whatever conditions you all approve should you decide to do so and any changes they would want to make in the future, say it's a new owner, that comes back before you as a rezoning.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I just want everyone to understand that's our intent.
Sure. And I think that's the hard part is this is smaller than our typical development agreement where we sit down at the table and have these discussions. We're bound to the ordinances as they currently are with minimal flexibility sometimes.
And also just to be clear with the parking deck, you know, that was a discussion, would there be an appetite for public-private partnership? And we, we, the town did not have that appetite at this time. And so as they reassess, the more feasible would be the parking lot for their development.
Okay.
One more little technical question, again on page 17, architectural standards. It says the petitioner will establish through covenants running with the land, the requirements for architectural elements and architectural style. So really, it's almost saying they will dictate, or to my reading, that they would dictate what everything, I know they're going to be the designer, but as far as the architectural standards.
Yes, I mean, they'll have an option based on their covenants and everything, but then they have to go through our process.
Planning and all.
Yeah. And that is just because this building is not in historic overlay district, but they are trying to get designated. If it gets designated, then they go through the historic review board.
It changes if they get that designation. All right, counsel.
This is a lot of information for me. I would really just want to defer tonight. I mean, this is like drinking from an Amazon truck of water, fire hydrant. I'm as anti-development residential, I think I've always ran on that, but when you ride by a dormant mill, we all remember what happened in the late 80s to the dormant mill that, where Walter Elijah now sits, it burned, right? And there's, this is not a bad, plan this a lot to digest, but I would feel more comfortable with a deferral tonight if, and I will make that motion to defer.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor to defer and a second.
Mayor, can we get some specificity of when?
I'm getting ready to ask that, thank you. Can you add to your motion?
The first meeting in January.
The first meeting in January, okay. Do you want to second that motion?
I still second that, yes.
All right, I have a motion on the floor to defer this vote until the first meeting in January and I have a second.
I would like to ask staff to provide us with the same presentation, please.
Okay. All right, we're in the middle of a vote, so Mr. Wolf has recused, so he cannot vote. So all those in favor of the motion on the table to defer to the first meeting in January, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So it's not a no, it's, it's a lot to take in.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Your thoroughness is very greatly appreciated.
Appreciate your, your time and letting us speak.
We appreciate what you're trying to do. We'd like to understand all the different entities that are involved because there is a lot here.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your professional questions and demeanor, counsel. I appreciate it very much. It's a very intense project and I'm sure we'll have beneficial discussion moving forward. New business item number three, first reading ordinance adopting a budget amendment for the Public Works Operations Center, Eric Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I've got the next three items on the agenda and they're all very similar, just different projects with regards to budget amendments. The first one, business item number three, is the Public Works Operations Center. As you know, the, the town has started, I say development, we've been working on some of the site, site issues for the Public Works Operations Center. To date, we've done some soil testing and space needs design work and we are expecting a revised floor plan from the architects later this week. To facilitate the construction of this building, the town will need to adopt a budget amendment acknowledging additional expenses for the project. And the budget attached, the budget amendment is attached to this report. This amendment only covers the grant funds that have already been received by the town from the state. Those were secured by Representative Felder last year and does not obligate any new monies at this time. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Eric on?
I was not able to open the amendment and on the iPad, can we at least see what we're voting on?
Yeah, all it is, is the ordinance, there's no additional information.
If he doesn't have it, I think the explanation that was given to me is that this is to simply move money from one budget year to the next so that we can proceed as planned with the design and begin the new operation.
Right, it was 20, $25 million, which was equivalent to the grant funds received from the state and the town has already received those grant funds.
It's very simple operation.
Make a, make a motion to approve new business item number three.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.
Because I think you submitted that information to us in the workshop, so we're, but we do need to.
But there was, there was an attachment.
You can't do an attachment to a link, it doesn't.
Something.
I see it on there, but you can't open it.
Something went haywire, I don't know.
So probably the same issue.
All of them are like that.
Great, great, awesome.
Could be the same issue.
The wizard, we're going to demote your wizard cap.
So you mean, and you hold your wizard cap then?
Yeah, I think this shows that I am not worthy of that, so.
I'll keep this a little bit longer.
Earn it again, Eric, earn it again. New business item number four, and this is first reading of the ordinance adopting a budget amendment to construct Fire Station Number Three.
Yes, this, as you mentioned, this budget amendment is facilitate the construction of the building of Fire Station Number Three. The town will need to adopt a budget amendment acknowledging expenses for this project. Would say that the budget amendment is attached, but y'all have already noted that you can't open it. So I'll just go into a little bit of detail. It does have $9 million recognized in bond proceeds. So this would be one that we would plan to issue debt for at the appropriate time. And then it has an offsetting of $9 million in the capital projects fund expenditures. So this is the first reading and we will have a legible or openable attachment for you at the next reading. But I'm happy to answer any questions. But this would be for Fire Station Number Three for the amount of $9 million.
For clarity, it's just capital, so it's the construction of the, not the firefighters and.
Correct, this is, this is building only. The latest estimate that we received was about 8.6 million, so we're adding just a little bit in there just in case for market, market fluctuation.
Thank you.
It's the same footprint or same design as Station Two?
Yes, I'm only on the, on the money side, so.
For comparison, what did Station Two cost?
Three point six, seven, just shot for it, I can't remember.
And how many years ago?
We opened in 2020, so started somewhere.
Four years ago.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
That's the cost of construction.
And that's consistent with other communities.
And material.
And material.
It is amazing.
But to your, to your question, it, it is roughly, not going to say exactly the same, but almost the same station, that over doubled cost.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number four.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve new business item number four, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. New business item number five, same guy, first reading, ordinance adopting a budget amendment to facilitate multiple capital projects for fiscal year 2025.
This one's a little bit more tricky, so there is a lot more explanation in the staff report, but what we're choosing to do this year, Mayor and council, is to appropriate more dollars from the reserves to have more of a capital budget, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. This budget amendment would, would appropriate half a million dollars from hospitality, hospitality tax fund, primarily to address two projects. One would be the Walter Elijah Park Phase Two improvements and the farmers market site improvements. The town has also received a $175,000 grant from the Parks and Rec Division of the state, and we have also already budgeted 1.85 million in this year's budget. So those funds will go primarily towards those parks projects. This amendment would also appropriate $325,000 from the water and sewer fund. Those projects or those funds would actually be used really to buy equipment, to help with road improvements, but also utility improvements within road right of way to make those repairs back. The big one is in the general fund, 12 million, $75,000. Those funds are going to come from two places, the first being the fund balance in the amount of $4,575,000, and then the rest would come from the capital reserve fund of 7 million, 7.5 million dollars. And there's a number of projects that we're, we're looking to target for this, the largest one being 5 million for the Fort Mill Community Center renovations, and 2.5 million for facility improvements to the YMCA center. Other projects would be Calhoun Street Park improvements, Hare Street Park improvements, also other park improvements for Millstone and Steel Street, a million dollars for acquisition and development for a land clearing debris site, an extra million dollars for road paving and reconstruction, $50,000 for emergency management purposes. And then finally, we would appropriate a million dollars from the stormwater fund to help with various stormwater projects throughout town. So council's motto is GSD, so this is a lot of, this is a, this all is going towards a lot of GSD.
That's exactly what I was going to say, so I, I appreciate, I know we've had these conversations several times, and I think some of the projects you've slated are smaller in scope, so we can focus, so we can get them out of the way they are needed, but I really want to, you know, thank you for having the, I guess, ability to carry mostly on these, is getting, the operations center has got to be done. I mean, some of these things we just can't, we can't continue to kick down the road, so we're getting some stuff done while, so we can tee up some of the bigger. The fire station, the chief did a great job of saying how important that is, we know it needs to be done, but we're not stopping everything till we can get that going. So this, if we can do multiple things at the same time, and that's what I really appreciate, give you all the, I'm going to give you all the latitude I can till we give you reason not to, so just GSD.
Yeah, this is, the key, key phrase, there's multiple tracks. We have a lot of staff working on a lot of different projects, so, but we have, I think, the bandwidth capable of addressing a lot of these at the same time, so.
To your point, you're the money side of this, but the project side of it is where we still are needing improved communication and understanding of what these are going to look like as they move in the process and the timing with it. When will this come back to us, each of these items, for us to be able to see and have a scope prior to the money actually being spent?
Sure, so you'll, you'll start seeing stuff on the operations center, as Eric had referenced earlier, we, we expect to get a revised preliminary design drawing with a revised estimate that we hope to be able to present to you folks at your meeting on the 25th. Same thing for 205 North White Street, we expect to review that revised design drawing on the 19th of this month, and again, hope to share that with you along with new updated preliminary cost estimates at your meeting on the 25th. We are starting to park some of those plans on your share file site, so you're able to go in and look at, you know, the Walter Elijah Park plans, Hardee's parking lot plans, et cetera. So we'll start to park those on your site, you'll start to see those things. As you see things on the 25th, we hope to give you guys your first look at construction timeline. So you'll, you know, you'll see a Gantt chart with that, they're revising that. We've already got all the deferred maintenance plugged into a chart using the team site, so I hope to share that with you at the same exact time as, as you see the construction timeline.
Thank you. I think it's important because this meeting is taped also, many of us took advantage of early voting at the community center across from the golf course, and you could see the diminished condition of the facility. I think it's important to point out that we have only owned that facility for actually a short period of time. It was donated to the town by the developer of Millbank, and up to that point, you know, we certainly don't have a lot of heart to put taxpayer money in facilities that aren't ours. So when you see that facility, and, and when we took it over, it had many years of delayed maintenance in that building. It wasn't a pristine facility for many years, not just while the town had it. So I had some texts and some people reach out and say, why could you have a town facility look like this? You know, because it was given to us, and we're working hard to get ourselves in a position to make it something that we'll be pleased with and proud of. So I just wanted to lay that question to rest.
Also, we don't put the, the rope back up in the corner, you had to climb that to pass gym class.
I was so good on that.
Brings me trauma.
Yes, exactly. I loved it.
Since you brought that up, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business item number three.
Yeah, I was going to say, I got one more question or one more comment, just to, even though we're approving this, are we still going to try to pursue additional grant opportunities or funding from the state of South Carolina for some of these projects?
I would assume so, yes.
Good answer, okay. Now you can make your motion.
I already made the motion, had a motion on table, there.
I had a motion to approve and a second for new business item number five.
First reading.
First reading, all those in favor, please aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. Now we'll move to new business item number six, first reading, an ordinance amending the town a Fort Mill procurement code so as to update methods for contracting on construction projects. Chris Pettit is our subject matter expert, but Phillip sits on the back row, and I'd like to say, I'm so proud, no other community can compare with the excellence that you put into your work. So we are so fortunate to have you, Phillip, thank you. Go, Chris.
Oh, sorry. I agree with everything said about Phillip. So Mayor, this, this item, you know, we, we were just talking about changes in construction and cost of construction, and, and something else that's changing in construction is the methods in which we're contracting for that, and, and that's becoming standard throughout the state and our region. So historically, the town has, has used a design bid, bid, build methodology. We are proposing with this a change to our code to add design, build, and construction manager, CM at risk, it's often called, to our menu. Basically, the, the procurement code is our menu of options that we utilize on a case-by-case basis, depending on various circumstances of, of a project and what's best, what will help us get it done quickest, most economically, et cetera. So this, this change just really adds options to that toolbox for Phillip to save us lots and lots of money.
Continue to save us lots and lots of money.
Happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
So Chris, it's interesting that we're having this discussion, I was at a meeting in Charleston the other day, and they were tackling a very big and complex project, and almost this exact, this, this came up, and they made recommendation to do a construction manager at risk to move it along, I thought was very timely, that, and that, that's what their recommendation was too, so I, I think it was a well-drafted document, there's a lot of information on there, which I think it was just, we, we weren't questioning, you were questioning, that we want to understand exactly what we were talking about and improving, so, but I thought it was well, well done.
Any further questions for Chris?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number six.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve and a second for new business item number six, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much. There are no information items and no executive session items on our agenda this evening, so let's start with Mr. Wolf, since he has a deficit in numbers of words he has.
So I'll prove I can keep my mouth shut. Well, this, since today is Veterans Day, I think when it started off, I want to thank all the veterans for their service and wish them a happy Veterans Day, and I think the town ceremony today was well-attended, and I appreciate everybody supporting our veterans, that was great. Also, the hats off to the events team, the sponsors, and the participants for another exceptional scarecrow crawl. That's one of my favorite events, it's always delightful to see all the young couples wandering around downtown and visiting our downtown area, I think that's great. And excited to see all the other fall and winter events coming up with the Christmas Village, tree lighting, and Christmas parade just around the corner. But to, to cap it off was the Keep America Beautiful presentation, mine, I brought that up, I think we've all complained about the trash, and here's a good way we can focus our attention on it and hopefully get some additional help. So I thought that was so very timely, and I really appreciate all the work she's done, so just good job all the way around, and I want some cookies. Christmas cookies.
Mr. Moody.
It was a great ceremony this morning, we also had one at River Trail where my dad got to come be with my son, and all the kids recognize their grandparents that fought in the wars. I remember my dad told me, he was 18, and he was in middle Pacific Ocean on an aircraft carrier, and he said, "Son," I was watching the sunset Christmas night, 1968, and he said, "If I'd known, I could have jumped off that thing and swam home, I would have done it." And his chief walked up to him, and he said, "Are you homesick, farm boy?" And he said, "Yeah, chief, I am," and he gave him a stern talking to at that point that he still remembers today, 50 years later, so, but it's, it's neat to hear the stories. And my grandfather, he was in World War II and fought in Korea, fought through the Pacific, so it's pretty cool just to be able to hear those things and share that heritage, so that's about all I've got, so.
Thank you, Chris. Ronnie?
Yeah, my dad fought in the South Pacific, my brother, my oldest brother fought in Vietnam, I fought in Germany, and my other brother fought in Korea, so.
Thank you for your service.
Family full honor.
Yep. That's all I got.
As we're talking about Veterans Day, I want to, you know, I often talk about my grandfather that flew a B-29, but you can commemorate veterans that you'd like to with the bricks down at Veterans Park, so that's one way to make sure that you're honoring them, so I like putting that plug out there to remind people of it. And, you know, it was brought up today, and you even said it in your prayer today, too, about they continue to suffer, so not only continuing to pray for those that are serving today, but those that are dealing with the aftermath. My Uncle Dee, Uncle Dusty, is dealing with Agent Orange complications from when he served previously, and he's a dear man to me, and certainly one of those things that, when we talk about serving our community above self, you know, he had no idea what he was going to be getting into 40 years later. On a little bit higher note, also want to talk about NAFO and Catawba Ridge are both still in the high school playoffs. So while regular season's over, those two continue to go. I think NAFO is away Friday night, I can't remember where, Catawba Ridge is at home. So if you're looking for something to do, there's nothing better than a beautiful fall sunset at Catawba Ridge High School, so feel free to come out. And then as we talk about the Keep America Beautiful campaign and what's going on, I think it's awesome because we often have people asking for ways to help, and how can they get involved? And not only can you help with the pick-up trash side of it, but you can be a volunteer on some of these committees, trying to make this project even bigger, so I encourage a lot of people to keep doing that. And want to remind everyone about the plastic backdrop off, I actually have a ton in my car right now, I'm going to be dropping off, but we use those to recycle and put in the park benches, so don't forget about that when you're doing under your holiday shopping, coming home. If you're not using reusable wax, take the plastic ones to the town hall.
Where is that, so specifically if you go in town hall?
Right at the front of the town hall, you don't even have, it doesn't have to be other than.
I'm just saying for the people who.
Yes. It's on the front porch at town hall and several other places, at least take it to the businesses that you frequent, they don't get recycled the same way, but, yeah, get a bench.
We have benches on Main Street that have come from that program, so by all means, we welcome your contributions.
So, but thank you, and thank you to all who have served.
Alan?
I'm going to take my time, I'm going to read a poem by Sheryl Dyson. "On Veterans Day, we honor all who answered to a service call, soldiers young and soldiers old, fought for freedom brave and bold. Some have died while others, some have lived while others died, and all of them deserve our pride. We're proud of all these soldiers who keep thinking of red, white, and blue. They fought for us and all our rights, they fought through many days and nights, and though we may not know each name, we thank all veterans just the same." So happy Veterans Day, thank you everybody.
Very nice, very nice. Ben?
First off, very sorry I could not attend today's ceremonies, I hated to miss that, it was a hometown thing, we had just some critically important things going on in the office, but we did take time to recognize those employees and their parents and grandparents and things that had served, and did a little, little photo op out in front, so it's, we definitely did take time to honor that, so it's this thing we take, I'll, I'll take very seriously. Just a reminder to, please don't put your leaves in the road, keep them in the grass.
Put them in the drain, right?
The town will get them, I promise. People think they have to be in the road for the city to get, for the town to get them, they will get them. Whiteville Park is, is horrendous, but I know there's some places around where slope yards, you may have to put them in the street, but just please don't do that. Also, the last thing I'll say is hold your candidates that just ran through the election, hold them accountable, and the grace period for all signs to be up is expired, so hold them accountable and call them and tell them to come get their signs up. Three years ago, when we woke up, there was not a trace that we ran, so that is the bar that I would set.
And if you want David Martin's phone number, it's.
In closing, I would like to congratulate David on a very nicely-run race, and for putting yourself out there to serve your community here in Fort Mill, we're very proud of you, and we look forward to working with you in the future. I did see a thing on Facebook from someone that wasn't a candidate, said, "Hey, the timeframe's up, those wire frames are expensive, go get some."
I'm going to get them for next year.
We may have people pulling them up they don't belong to, I don't know. I, I can't say enough to thank Ronnie and Moody's dad, and our relatives, your uncle, and my dad was in Germany during the Korean conflict. We're only here because of the, the folks that were willing to put their life on the line, you know, we, we really make a big deal about a lot of stuff, but the bottom line is, we're here because there were men and women willing to sacrifice everything, everything just for us, and they don't even know us by name. So thank a vet, have a good week, don't blow your leaves into the street or into the gutters, or, you know, by the way, not into your neighbor's yard either, so, and don't litter. Thank you, and I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, have a good evening.